All right, welcome to the Tuesday, January 28th, 2025 Ordnance Revision Committee Meeting. As a reminder, the O R C is not a decision-making body. We provide directions and advice to city staff for ordinance revisions that will eventually go to the full commission for consideration. There will be two opportunities for public comment, one at the beginning and one at the end. People can speak for up to three minutes. Right now is our first opportunity. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're calling in by phone, you star nine if you would like to address the O R C. Staff will call you by your name or the last three digits of your phone number. Please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anybody attending? Who would like to speak?
Yes, we have one Zoom panelist with hand raised, Adam Jaskiewicz. Give me one second. Okay, Adam Jaskiewicz, go ahead, please.
All right, this is Adam Jaskiewicz calling from 1430 Las Vegas Drive. Just looking through this staff memo, it all looks. It all looks pretty good. I agree with with most of what's going on in here. I think. Simplifying it down to two classes of parking is good. I do want to make sure that we get some visitor parking because I know a lot of the time the. The developers will put in like fully enclosed parking rather than, you know, long-term parking rather than. You know, it's kind of a substitute for some of the short-term spaces. And I think we want to make sure that there's some short-term spaces available as well. And then I liked the Essentials of Bike Parking Manual. It looks pretty similar to the Boston guidelines as far as like types of bike racks and all of that kind of thing. And avoiding wave racks and the. You know, wheel bender racks and stuff like that. So I think overall, all this looks good. So thank you for addressing this.
Thank you. And I take it because we have no one else on. We have no one else who will comment, so I will close public comment. We also got our communication in our packet about e-bikes and the need for any special regulations for safety in terms of if fireproofing is necessary. If we want to consider that in our discussion tonight. So we will move on to item number three, A Bicycle Parking Requirements Standards. And I will turn it over to staff for what I assume will be a staff presentation.
One question. I was gonna say, I would just introduce planners Julia Shake and Mariana Melanie Hookren. And I'm here to take notes and answer any technical questions, so on and so forth. But let me turn it over to my colleagues.
Oh, and I was just gonna say, there was one other communication that was added a little bit later about E V parking in general. So staff decided to share that with this committee, even though it's not on the agenda tonight. And that will be shared with the full planning commission on the next planning commission's agenda.
Thank you.
All right, so Julia and I have prepared a memo. It does have four kind of big points. Does anyone have a preference for if we just go through the whole memo at once and then talk about all of them at the end? Or if we start with one, talk about it, two, talk about it, three, talk about it?
I don't, I don't have a.
I don't either. Whatever you, whatever you guys want to do, if you don't want to talk consistently for the whole time, if you want to take breaks and discuss, whatever works best for you guys, I think.
And hopefully everyone can see my screen. So both the planning commission and staff have identified the need to update the city's bicycle parking requirements and standards. Given the city's goal is to increase bicycle use and improve generally usability design and accessibility of bicycle parking. So we do have three diagnoses and commentaries to talk about. And then one finally is the next steps for continuing this. I know this was kind of kicked off in, I believe, October of last year. But this is a little bit more detailed, some more information for us and for you to think about. So the first point is updating and simplifying the required parking tables. Right now, the vehicle parking, the bicycle parking are all together in one table. It's a really long table. It goes through each of the permitted uses and says what the required parking is. It has the percentage for the different classes of bicycle parking. It includes the percentages for the vehicle parking and the electric vehicle, which we aren't going to be talking about today. But one of. The general considerations that we had was to create a separate bicycle parking table from the vehicle parking table to hopefully help simplify things. And streamline that information because it is a lot to go through as it is now. Another point of consideration for the required parking table is generally increasing the required bicycle parking minimums specifically for residential uses. For next steps, further research needs to be done by staff to determine any changes in the other uses categories. But generally, in reviewing comparison cities and their bicycle parking requirements. They typically require one or two spaces per unit in multifamily residences. Currently, the U D C requires one bicycle parking space for every five dwelling units. And that's something that we see a lot as staff with development review and new long-term storage bicycle parking rooms and racks on site. I already talked about a required bicycle parking table that is separate to kind of streamline that information from the vehicle side of things. I've included an example, some cities, this is from Boston, have simplified it even further rather than identifying every single use, separating it into more broad categories. Just to kind of have everything more streamlined here, they have residential, non-residential. Some cities have more, some cities have less. We have a lot because we go through all of the uses. And then the third consideration for this updating the table section is eliminating the Class B bicycle parking. Right now, we have three classes of bicycle parking. A, which is completely enclosed, long-term parking. B, which is covered racks, and then C, which are just fixed racks, typically the short-term physical, short-term bicycle parking. In a review of comparison cities and national organizations, typically they only have two classes of bicycle parking, just long-term and short-term. And having the three classes, again, with the simplification, moving to two could help eliminate that layer of complexity. And it seems to be the kind of industry standard. I think along with that, the short-term and long-term. Means moving towards diagnosis number two, which is updating the design guidelines and having more specific rules and requirements and standards for the bike parking that we would expect for both long-term and short-term parking. I will leave it there for now. And we can talk a little bit and then maybe move on to number two when we're ready.
Sounds good. Does anyone want to kick off with any comments or questions? Commissioner Abrams, I see your hand.
Yeah, just quickly, sounds great. I support increasing the number of required parking spaces and also a simplification or clarification of the table. I also think reducing the number of types makes sense. I had a kind of clarifying question there. If we move, if the proposal is to move from. Enclosed or covered or not covered to long-term and short-term. I'm assuming there's also a correlation there. So short-term is unc, is not covered. And long-term is covered, but I wondered, is long-term always enclosed? And is there a version of covered parking that is not enclosed?
So yes, generally, the short, short-term is directed at visitors. It's directed at people who are there for, you know, two hours or less, something like that. And it's generally outside uncovered. And then similarly, long-term is directed at people. Residents, you know, people who are going to be there for extended periods of time. I think the kind of difference is that maybe our Class B is directed at that kind of middle ground of people, like maybe employees who are only there for like six to eight hours rather than blocking their bikes overnight and things like that. And I, it's just kind of a decision that we would have to make. Generally, long-term does mean enclosed. It has an added level of security. That's the kind of important thing with long, long-term is that thinking about giving up some levels of ease for that security, knowing that especially people who have, you know. E-bikes and cargo bikes and things like that, they're maybe more willing to give up the general ease of just rolling up and having a rack right there to having something that's, you know, enclosed or locked or whatever it may be. So it is, it can be a decision. Sorry.
It all, that makes sense to me, and yet I feel like there are a significant number of users. Maybe I, maybe this is me, so I'm bringing my personal anecdotal evidence into it. But, you know, where I park for seven hours. But I, and I would love it to be covered. But I don't think I would qualify for like an enclosed indoor space, you know, unless, so I guess I'm, I don't want to answer, but I'm just like, kind of not sure what to do with that, that version of user. And currently, it's not like there is covered parking that I can use for the seven hours where I'm going. I'm usually just, my bike's in the rain. So yeah, that's all.
Commissioner Mills.
That was exactly my comment, which I, I like all of it. And looking into the manual that was attached, the covered parking that is not enclosed is the stuff that feels like it's missing from both short and long-term. And like, that's the thing that I think is often more accessible and beneficial. So I think as we're thinking about the multipliers, and I think we should, we're gonna have to put that context. You know, the, the covered but not secure parking somewhere. And I think that we should just think about, like, either if we move to two categories, which it makes sense. I don't think that it's anticipated necessarily in that manual, or maybe it would just be considered short-term. And if that's the key case from that attachment, then. I would just, I would vote for like increasing the multiplier on that side because I think that that's. It's, I think that that is an additional benefit. I don't, honestly, I don't want, I don't want apartment buildings to build bigger bike rooms in the basements. Like, I just don't think it's gonna get used. And so. Yeah. But, so I like that idea. Of simplifying.
Commissioner Norton.
A couple of things, I'm. I'm not sure it's a bad thing to have three categories. I mean, I like, you know, when I go to work and park up at the Art and Architecture Building, I park underneath the space to keep it out of the rain unless they're all taken. And then the bike sits out in the rain. So having covered spaces, especially at workplaces, where you know people are gonna be there during the day. And like to protect their bikes when they're out, isn't necessarily a bad thing. And I'm not sure that having a third category for that reason is a bad thing. So I'm not sure I would jettison, jettison it entirely for the sake of simplicity, just for the sake of simplicity, just a thought. The other question I have is what exactly? Does enclosed bike parking entail, is it like, is it like those bike lockers I've seen some places? Are you gonna compel people to build new structures that are kind of big and clunky? That's the second question. And then I see showers in the table that I think you provided in the memo, just as an example of what Boston is doing. But are we lining up to tell existing property owners they have to retrofit buildings to add showers to satisfy parking requirements? Or are we just talking about biking, parking?
So like any of these, I'll, I'll take your third question first and then chime in and let Mariana like give more details. So any, like, any other requirements, like, these wouldn't be retroactive. It would be like, if any, like, thing came up for development review, like, so you'd have to, I mean, sort of like E V, like. So just to give an example, like, every once in a while, we'll get like a site plan that comes up that was approved in like 2020. And they want to make amendments, the site plan is still active. So one of the things that we always look for, because we know our E V parking standards have changed since 2020. So they always have to like update and like basically add more E V parking. So it'd just be in cases for like new development moving forward, like, wouldn't have like direct impacts unless they came up for like some sort of new level of development review or amendment to a site plan or something like that.
Okay.
And, and then I'll say, we haven't considered showers as part of this. It is something that Boston includes. If it's something that you all are interested in, we can go down that line, but it's not something that staff has looked at. Even though it is included in the table, I just didn't want to cut the table off so that if any information was missing, that would get confusing. So that's on that. Your second question was about.
What enclosed, what exactly qualifies as enclosed parking?
Yes, and I, I think that, that gets into the second point of deciding what our standards are for enclosed parking. Because as it is right now, you know, the U D C is pretty vague. It says, you know, security and things like that, and that's what we try to tell people. But we can talk about if it makes sense to have those individual bike lockers or if that's not something that we want to be included in our Class A or long-term parking. And then, yeah, we, we can also look at, you know, if, if we're not interested in simplifying down to two classes. There is, I think, also room to look at the table and decide what percentage of A, B, and C makes most sense in different areas. There can also be that kind of overhaul as well as part of this.
And not to, just to complement that, and not to like overstep point two, because I think some of these ideas will come a little bit, become a little bit more revealed than that. But I think one of the ideas potentially of like convincing it to like potentially a short-term parking, you know, could be different. I mean, like, it would be a more complicated code, but like long-term parking in an apartment building might be slightly different than if we had, you know, increased the long-term parking requirement. Because currently in a lot of commercial uses, there's very little, if not none, zero requirements for, for long-term parking, like in a commercial structure, you know, like places down in. And one of the sites that we plan to visit, like, as we go into next steps, is a recently built, kind of business, light industry down in Research Park area. So like those types of currently have very little, if not none, or zero, long-term parking requirements. But like, is there something we could accomplish by reducing to two and kind of rethinking those percentages between the two? Does long-term parking, parking, you know, contemplate like you, I mean, it wouldn't unfortunately impact the University of Michigan. But like, you know, like at a new business, do they need to have long-term parking for their employees that are gonna be there for seven, eight, nine hours a day? But, you know, maybe it's just a bike foyer off of like the, the entrance foyer or something like that. And can those things be accomplished by rethinking? So these are like the trade-offs that we're still wrestling with and, you know, welcome your feedback on. Can some of these things be accomplished by reducing to two, but kind of rethinking those two definitions and rethinking the percentages? So like, long-term parking may look different in a residential structure than a commercial structure or like an industrial structure. And thinking about like reducing the number of categories, because right now, like, yeah, our table, as Mariana said, our table goes use by use. Like, are the parking requirements for, you know, I don't know, a rendering plant different than a slaughterhouse? Not that we have either of those in Ann Arbor anymore, but like, thinking of ways of like, kind of condensing, like folding those up to higher categories. So like, you know, light industrial, you know, or based on employee counts and stuff like that, instead of like just square footage and those types of things. So there's still a lot of like minutia that we're, we're wrestling with, but welcome your feedback and helping provide guidance on those things too.
I'll just say, you know, again, kind of from my own experience, just kind of thinking things through and not being a bike parking expert. And all of that, but it seems to me like covered parking would be more appropriate for residential structures, for apartment dwellers who maybe don't have room inside their structure but need, want a place to put their bike. But I don't know that you need enclosed, I'm sorry, enclosed parking would make sense for residential structures where people are leaving them overnight or over the weekend or something. Covered parking, I think, would be sufficient for commercial structures where people are there working during the day or there for shopping or something. That kind of thing. So I think tailoring the kind of parking structure that makes the most sense for the kind of unit or the building that you're doing is the way to think about it. Rather than just coming up with two classes and saying now we're gonna divvy them up or require them in both places or whatever. Two cents. My two cents.
Commissioner Adams, I don't know if you want to throw anything in there.
No, yeah, I don't. Not my area of expertise.
Mine either. So I'll, like, the first two, I'm, I, I like the idea of. Splitting out bike parking in the tables just to make it clearer and then increasing the minimums. But. I will say, like, this discussion is like making me rethink my thoughts on that third bullet. So I was like, yeah, cool, simplify it. I don't know, like, do two, just do two, do categories, but I'm not a biker. And I think the points that Commissioner Norton is making make a lot of sense to me where, you know, residential, you might want that enclosed, secure. And then in, in your workplace, or if you're going like somewhere where you'll be for, you know, going for coffee for a few hours, you might want that, that covered. And I don't specifically have a problem with the three categories. I just always see simplification and I'm like, do it. But I think, I think those are really good points. Do you guys have, do you want, do you have any other questions for us on like that first? Category thing you had, or do you want to move on?
I don't think so. So yeah, we can move on to number two. Which is updating the design guidelines, which maybe has the most potential tangents and questions and conversations about what. Is important, what we want to be specific about, what we don't want to be specific about. But generally, our design of bike parking facilities is pretty vague. And with other cities and with things like the essentials of bike parking, it's clear that we can be more specific. And I think staff would also prefer if we're more specific because it makes just review a lot easier. And it would make things a lot easier on the applicants who are often proposing things. And we don't have specific things to, specific criteria to look at them against, and then it could cause confusion and things like that. So we've pulled together some points of consideration for things that we might or might not want to be more specific about. One being location. So things like if there should be a specific maximum distance from doors, either interior or exterior, stairs and elevators. Specifying if indoor long-term parking should be on a specific floor and noting that there may be some financial implications, especially in the kind of downtown developments where that could have an implication. If that ground floor bike room could potentially be another unit or commercial space. And also clarifying if bicycle parking, required parking can be within individual units. Security, considering both the security of bikes and of users, thinking about, you know, those rooms that are C M U in the parking garages in dark corners. Things like that, if there's ways that we can make people feel secure going to them and also their bikes are secure within them. Accessibility, thinking about the doors that would lead to bicycle rooms, thinking about the layout of the room, making sure that the specific types of racks are easy to access and easy to use. And clarifying if signage is necessary so that parking is easier to find. Dimensions, updating our dimensions because they're right now just for kind of traditional bikes. Whereas now we have more e-bikes and cargo bikes and tandem bikes and accessible bikes and things like that. And then also specifying once safe, space-saving dimensions might be used. We get a lot of the kind of vertical proposals for vertical racks and things like that because they save a lot of space. And then lastly, acceptable racks, clarifying which, you know, there's lots of different racks out there which are approvable, which we prefer, which are not approvable. Maybe there can be a ratio for the acceptable amount of space-saving racks versus standard floor-level racks. And then also identifying if things like outlets are necessary if we're having, if we're thinking about e-bikes in these parking rooms. And then I'll just caveat and say, a lot of these considerations are kind of geared more towards the long-term parking. And maybe more specifically in kind of residential and commercial larger buildings. The D D A, the Downtown Design Authority, is currently working on, Development Authority, is currently working on. Their new guide for users for bike parking. And so they're gonna, and theirs is more focused on the short-term. And so that's gonna be coming out, and I think that will help us determine more for the kind of Class C shorter-term bike parking. Not yet published. So right now, these considerations are kind of more geared towards the long-term.
I'm gonna ask a question before I get to the hands that I'm sure I'll start seeing. I see one. Oh, no, I don't anymore. Are you guys, I saw later in the memo, you're doing some reviews of peer cities. Are you finding these types of, are you finding like what other cities are doing? Is that clear in their code, like for these? These different areas? I wonder if you have recommendations.
There, I don't know that we have specific recommendations at this point, but they do like some specify, you know, it has to be, the bike racks have to be within a hundred feet of the door. You know, there's like a specific number, some don't. Some specify, you know, some, a lot of them do call out to the essentials of bike parking and say the racks that they recommend are the ones that we want you to use. And these are, we're using their criteria. So some of them are more specific in certain areas than others. Right now, we are just kind of gathering the different things to see which roads we definitely want to go down, which ones we maybe don't, because there are a lot of ways to approach it and a lot of ways that we could be more specific or less specific.
And considering, yeah, and some of them even, you know, down to design specifications about like the doors to bike rooms and like transparency on the door, the amount of the door that needs to be transparent. Now, the ratios of, of outlets and stuff, which brings up questions about fire suppression. Had an interesting conversation recently about some of those considerations with our fire marshal, actually, and just kind of lithium ion batteries in general. But, and you know, kind of these different, like, different variables and, and with the, the kind of trade-offs, like, like Mariana said, we already hear, we do hear feedback like in two cases. We see feedback consistently in, I would say, three cases, and help me out, Alexis, since you have more experience. But one, oftentimes, the first pushback from the development community is wanting to move their bike room if there's another demand. So like a utility room or increasing ground floor commercial space, you see the bike room oftentimes getting split or put into an underground garage level. So like the demand for, you know, especially like in taller buildings and more complex buildings, the demand for limited space. Two, within that regard about rack requirements, like, you know, especially since our current code isn't very clear about the types of permitted racks. It just says like the, the planning manager may permit space-saving racks, you know, upon discretion or something within those regards. You know, folks moving to, or wanting to move towards really like not user-friendly, like just hooks where you have to lift up. So I mean, internal determination for standards, at this point, it's seventy thirty is the, right? Alexis, Mariana, isn't that the, wasn't that brand determination? So like, up to thirty percent can require human force essentially, because there are a lot of different like bike racks that you can roll on. And there's counterweights or springs and things that like, it can be vertical, but like, you're not physically having to lift up a bike, you know, which, you know, may be over your head. And but currently, our guidelines don't specify that, don't specify the minimum, minimum or maximum distance that could be off the ground. And all these things are factors, you know, especially if somebody is like shorter, or if you're getting home at, you know, ten thirty at night from class, you know, think about undergrad. Am I really gonna want to wrestle with my fifty-pound e-bike that because all the like ground level spaces are, are taken? And the, the third area that we hear feedback from is from affordable housing. So like especially Jen Hall, and she's on our list of folks to chat with also, because Mich's requirements are so like stringent. And I mean, similar to what we've seen, like T C one requirements, like, and the difficulties there for, for affordable housing and like some of the design requirements. Like anything that's outside of the, of very, yeah, not very basic, but you know, a kind of standard, traditional, like multifamily housing project can create complications for. For affordable housing projects, just in like maximizing space and getting their numbers to pencil out as they're complying for, applying for. And getting their numbers to pencil out as they're complying for, applying for competitive, uh, funding requirements. Like our affordable housing community has been great, you know, eleven forty-six South Maple, that's an Avalon project that we saw back in November. And they met the minimum requirements and, you know, were able to make it happen and stuff, but, uh, keeping those kinds of, those three types of considerations in mind too. Like the more we regulate, does it make things more complicated and for the development community, especially for affordable housing developers? And the, the, the more. Uh, complex rooms get, um, does it also make it more difficult? Like, do these create impediments for, for like usability or functionality, um, in general?
Alexis, did you wanna say something?
Um, Mariana sort of, um, um, took my last point, um, one, building off what you said was. I was gonna ask, did any of those examples, or any of the peer cities that we kind of, did any of them speak out to you? Or that you definitely pursue that or don't pursue that? I'm not interested in that. That would be helpful feedback for. Um, Julia and Mariana and then also, you know, we, we are wrestling with and we appreciate your input on the, on the balance between. We do wanna make our standards purposeful and be helpful to, to people. Um, this is, I, I mean, is it an amenity? Is it a basic infrastructure? Um, and so we wanna regulate it enough that it's purposeful, useful, meaningful. But there's the balance, you over-regulate it too much and then you're just being onerous and demanding and. Um, and this is where we need your feedback to, to help strike that balance. Um, I don't think we're trying just to throw more regulations just for the purpose of over-regulating. But we think that this is a such a critical element of development that we need a minimum standard for it. Because if you leave it up to, if you leave it silent, you might not get any. And we don't think that's a community value. And if you, if you regulate it a little bit, but without being specific. That's what sort of we're, we're seeing now. We're seeing some developers just provide fairly. Um, okay, now my words are escaping me, but. Um, yes, they're providing bike parking, but it is not accessible or usable. It's just too difficult or poorly designed and then it's worse than, maybe it's worse than having them. Julia kinda said the same thing.
Commissioner Adams.
That's, um, I think Alexis, you just touched on what I was gonna address, which is. If the purpose of being more prescriptive is to provide clarity, this is an area where I wouldn't do that. Um, I think I would be more prescriptive though if staff are having a difficult time enforcing. That's where I think, and putting more meat on the bone makes some sense. I, I wouldn't have a lot of heartburn about staff using judgment around what's accessible. But if there's enforcement issues and folks are providing the minimum and, and like daring staff to enforce. And, you know, obviously everybody's resource constrained, there's, it's not, you know, it's. I, I wanna be, I think this is really where staff has to, to tell us a little bit about. Where, what would make it easier to be meaningfully, um, to create standards that are more objective, that can be more easily enforced. In those discussions, cuz I think that's where I would, I would, I would come right up to that line maybe and stop, um, to make sure we're getting what we want. Without being unnecessarily prescriptive or design restrictive. We don't wanna do that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna. You know, the, the, I guess I prioritize the construction of housing. But we still don't want buildings that are not meeting our, our objectives. So, um, I wanna get up to that line and then maybe stop.
Yeah, I can share and I know that Sarah, I see your hands are up, but I'll just address, I think what we're seeing is this, um, we're. Where we are seeing the pain point, um, is. Um, high-rise residential and they're provide, and the class A. Um. That we just say, this is the number of spaces that you need to provide. There is a standard in the code that generally speaks to, it needs to be two by six by, I think, six. No, like three or four feet of clearance. So it gives a cube, like a, well, it's not a cube, but a, a three-dimensional rectangle. I think at the time that it was written, it was sort of envisioned that these would be sort of like literally like lockers. Or something of that with walls and a door that might go exterior to the building. Um, at the time it was written, we didn't have a lot of downtown development that was going lot line to lot line to lot line. Um, so what, and then there's one line that says alternatives may be acceptable. So fast forward to where we are today and we are seeing the downtown projects putting a room. Sometimes on the first floor, but the second row, not the storefront space. A room, uh, somewhere on the first floor or sometimes in the basement. And the room has just a whole bunch of a variety of racks of various functionality. Sometimes there's a room with like the school kind of racks bolted to the floor. I think some have the hooks on the wall, some have two levels. Uh, we saw that, I think, for a number of years. And we don't, we, we wanted to go do the survey, how are those being used? Some of the very newest projects are putting a few more dollars into that budget. The rooms are still located in the basement, but I think they're purchased, they're willing to purchase more, um. Um. More machinery that will lift those bikes up off the floor for people so they can be double stacked. Um, but the bottom line is. It is becoming the Wild West and we're not, and we're not sure where. If what the solutions that people are proposing specifically downtown high-rises are at all useful to anybody else. We're not seeing the complaints or the designs outside of downtown or for the office and commercial. We haven't had a lot of office being proposed in a long time. Um, same thing with, you know, we've got no new shopping centers and so forth. But that's what we're seeing right now. And so we're, if we're gonna tackle some, let's tackle it all and. I'll just say like that's what we're, we are continually having to identify what is an acceptable alternative. Um, we have recently got Brett as planning manager to make a declaration to say, as long as. Um. Seventy percent of them can be used by an av- person of average strength. Great.
Require no human force. They could be like the vertical rack, they can be suspended, but require no human force to lift it up. Because they're counterbalanced or have springs and there's like a bunch of racks like on the market now. And like, yeah, I think the development community, we've had a few projects within the past like three months. I think they've all been like receptive and it hasn't been a major pushback originally, you know, have proposed like the, the cheapest option and just like actual hooks that you have to lift it up. Three to nine inches depending on the actual mounting height that the hooks would be. And as staff has kinda discussed that and there's been no pushback, uh, at least in the projects that I've been involved. And I haven't heard from other staff that there's been pushback for, from the development community to change out those racks to be something a little bit more. Slightly more technological, more user-friendly, but, but these are the types of things that we're seeing. I think Alexis and then I'll stop talking so Sarah can talk that she's had her virtual handout for a while. Um, but I think these are the things that we're starting to see that like, maybe the code worked at the time with the development. But like, it was also written at a time that we weren't getting many like large-scale bike rooms being constructed. But as they're being implemented in practice, you know, we've noticed and Mariana laid out those like. Issues very succinctly that like, we're seeing these issues that like, the, when we have such a big variety of what's actually being produced in development. There's probably a, and some is better than others, there's probably some sort of problem with our code. So like, what is the actual problem? How prescriptive do we wanna be? Can we make this better without being too onerous, uh, as Commissioner Adams said? But, uh, making it a little bit more defined. So I think, I think staff definitely feels like there's more definition that needs to be, uh, you mean, needs to be, uh, found. But yeah, coming up to that, close to that line to not being overly onerous or regulatory. But, but I think, I think the staff consensus at this point is that we can do better. And we can make it easier for both the development community because it's like having clear code makes things easier. Uh, and you know, it could save a review round, uh, you know, two to four weeks. Uh, you know, cuz those comments are straightforward, the bike room is approved in like the, the, the first round. And making it easier for staff also, like, not, well, technically this meets code, it meets code technically, but does it meet the intent? Well, we can try to discuss with the, the project to make it better, but they're under no obligation. Because technically speaking, it meets the code, even though it's not what we would like to see.
Commissioner Mills.
I have like a page full of thoughts and so I'm gonna start where we like just left off. If developers are cutting corners on this and trying to like, you know, put in hooks. I, it begs the question to me like, is our multiplier wrong? Is there, is, are we saying that there is a need for this, that they don't, like, that, that their residents are not seeing as a benefit? Because like racks that nobody can use feels like the, like, um, you wouldn't do that. If your residents are seeing this as a benefit. And so that's one of the things that I, I think that we should be thinking about design. And making sure that if they, they put it in, it's functional, because there's, that's terrible if it's not functional and accessible. And I actually would put this back up in the previous bucket too, to say, I think we need to understand what the multiplier is. And maybe this is controversial, but like downtown, I almost think that there's less of a need for a bicycle than like the next neighbor's. Neighbor puts out, like maybe in the high-rises downtown, we don't need gigantic bike rooms. Um, because that's where you've got more bike shares and spin scooters or whatever the things are called, right? And so I, I know that then the location part of it is making it more complicated, so I'm saying that like halfway, but like. I, um. I, in terms of doing research, I actually like looking at places that have campuses or kind of a development patterns. Like we have, where like. Um, where they do have some high, like good high-rise residential near where a lot of people wanna be, I think would be really beneficial. And or talking to people who live in high-rises with good bike rooms and bad bike rooms. And if like, and seeing like occupancy, like, you know, how much those bike rooms are used. The other thing that's in that same bucket of like, um, not so much about the design, but going back to the multiplier table. What you brought up about affordable housing, if we're gonna simplify that table. Um, in the, in the first section that we talked about, like maybe for resident, like afford, affordable housing. We have a different multiplier, right? Like that's an easy way to address that, um, potentially. Um, in terms of the design things, this is not, again, I don't, I'm saying this. Um, but I don't think, I don't know how to write it into words. The thing that upsets me more than anything else is when. Parking, vehicular parking is more accessible and convenient than their bicycle parking. Like, I would, like, that kicks me off and maybe that's wrong to be ticked off, but it does. And so like, I, so if you don't have any vehicular parking at all, then I think. Again, I don't want you to build something that's never gonna be used, but like that's the thing that like upsets me. Um, and then again, if it's not on the ground floor, which I understand why you might not want it to be on the ground floor. But if it's not on the ground floor, elevators or stairs with the, like, the dedicated rail, like, I, I just feel like it's. A very special person who is going to carry their bike up and downstairs that ha- like. And I, and I just don't think that that's gonna be used as often, so I think we should. Those are the like couple of design features that I think. Regularly come up, that we regularly ask, like, how are people gonna get there and why is? Why is this not as easy to get to as the, as the vehicular parking?
Yeah, all great points and yeah, appreciate that and like, yeah. Does, someone that has an e-bike in an old apartment complex that has no like bike rooms and it's just outside storage, not gonna leave it out in the rain. So it's in my living room and it's a conversation piece, piece and it's nice. But it's a pain just to ca- carry it up like one step and fight with the door, the heavy door, because there's, you know, fire doors and stuff like that. So thinking about those things is definitely important. Uh, to your fir- first point, Commissioner Mills. It's not, it's not the developers are cutting corners because, you know, we have our requirements, but like. They're not cutting corners, they're meeting the minimum requirements, but the question is like, are the minimum requirements enough? And you have a great point because my hunch is the University of Michigan and I tried to dig up data. So any of the folks connected directly with the university, if you know good data sources, or maybe planning department has done these kind of surveys or something. You know, tried to look, you know, on transportation, you know, I know the university's won like awards for being a bike-friendly campus, but I haven't. And like a number of students, but I haven't been able to see like any, like actual numbers about the university. So I'd be curious to see that, cuz like my hunch is that the University of Michigan isn't like UC Davis. It's now like eighty percent of the students ride their bike and part of that's because it's, they are, the weather's okay all year round. And the, the geographic configuration of the campus. Central campus is actually pretty compact and like, a lot of folks probably make the decision that. It's easier for me to walk than like go get a bike, even if we're like ea- more easily accessible. And, and ride it to, like you spend as much time messing with the bike, even if the infrastructure was good. Um, as actually just walking to class, um, with your headphones in or whatever undergrads do these days. Um, so, so yeah, if anybody's connected with the university has like a little bit more data, um, about like. What is the actual ridership like? So yeah, and that's one of the things like as we get into like, uh, our next steps and stuff is like really differentiating. Is it, is the demand wrong or is the design wrong? And it's probably a little bit of both. And so I think, yeah, developers aren't cutting corners, but they're looking to reduce costs. I mean, like that's not producing space. So any way that they can like double stack bikes in there, it's more space if they can dedicate to other uses. Which just, you know, financial pro forma questions. So I wouldn't say they're cutting corners, but they're just, you know, economic, economically driven. Um, but yeah, teasing out and that's one of our goals, like in the next steps. And yeah, if we can talk to people and stuff too would be amazing. And meeting with community groups and stuff too that might have more inroads or more information on this, like, is it a design issue or is it a demand issue? Maybe our numbers are way off and like, yeah, we just don't, I mean, like we're maxed out now with like our bike. Who's gonna ride a bike in Ann Arbor is already, already riding a bike and, you know, that's what it is and the numbers like need to just be tweaked. Or is the design of what's getting produced so bad that it's like discouraging people to use a bike that they would be? And it's probably like everything, a little bit of both, but like trying to like nuance that out is one of our like goals of the next steps as much as possible.
I'm still a future bike rider, by the way. I'm still not, I can, I know I can do it one of these days. I just don't do it now. Commissioner Norton?
And this, and this seems to be a place where you really do wanna take the time to interview. But you, current users or potential users, um. And not force developers to provide more than what's really gonna be needed, especially as tight as the spaces. Um. Given all of that and I kinda think, I know that they're driven by, you know, the economic considerations, but. I would think if they've got tenants who really want good bike, um, you know, good bike facilities, they're gonna wanna provide that, that's an amenity. And there's probably a chicken and egg problem here, like it, the more that we get people on biking, the more they're gonna wanna have bike facilities. The more bike facilities are, the more comfortable people will be getting a bike. Um, I kinda suspect, like, I agree with Sarah that. My guess is a lot of people in the near-town areas don't have bikes cuz they don't think they need them cuz they can walk everywhere. Maybe you don't need to make those places have a lot of bikes. I see a lot of younger families with cargo bikes. I don't think they're living downtown. I'm, I'm also wondering like, where will all of this apply? If we're now building new townhomes, kinda like just got approved down off of, um. Siao Church, I don't remember if they had bike facilities in those units, but those could easily have small, you know, families with small kids. Who would wanna use cargo bikes. So, but I think all of that is just, it's probably worth taking the time to interview developers and tenants. And downtown store owners and really get a good bead on, um, what's really needed. And then if, if developers come up with a whole bunch of different styles to provide bikes as long as they work, who cares if they're different styles? Um, I'm, I'm not sure that the fact that there are different styles out there is a signal that the code is broken. I take that more as a signal, there's lots of different styles out there and you can pick, as long as they work, is that a problem? I don't know. Another two cents. But I don't know. Sarah, you use a cargo bike or you, and a bigger kind of e-bike, I just have a regular old-fashioned me bike. Um, and, and as long as there's a hoop parking thing, I'm fine. Um. Is that a, did I just make up something cool like me bike instead of?
Yeah, well, that's the first time I've heard it.
I use a me bike.
I like that. Um, I'll, I'll just say, I think that, that your next steps on like the interviews locally and with peer cities and I, I think those are good peer cities. I mean, everything I've ever heard about Portland is that I don't, it was like a huge bike infrastructure. I think those are good peer cities, I mean, everything I've ever heard about Portland is that I don't, it was like a huge bike infrastructure town, I hope it still is. Um, I think that'll help tease out. A lot of these questions, I mean, again, as a non biker, but as somebody who wants. Wants people that do bike to be able to bike as easily as possible, like I fully agree with. Making sure those bike rooms are completely accessible, so if you don't have elevators like, and I think a developer came up. And we suggested the same like you have to put those rails on, if you're gonna put it in the basement, that's fine. Let's make sure that it's close to the door and well lit and not just like in the middle of a parking garage. Like in a building I used to live in, like, nobody would ever use that. But we've gotta be able to make sure that people can get them down the stairs and up the stairs if they're, you know, in an easier way. Any other comments on this part? I am excited to see what research you guys come back with in terms of comparisons and what's going on within our city too.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, what could could we do anything to get you on a bike? We can't change the weather and we're only like working within the the constraints of uh private development. Is there anything that we could do to get you on a bike?
Uh, I need better bike lanes in Northeast Ann Arbor, um, I'm just like scared, I guess, is part of it. And I don't know what kind of bike to get, so this ignorance is a huge part of it, so you probably could help me with that. You sound like you know, you have an e-bike, I kinda want an e-bike.
E-bike, but Mariana is the bar none, the biggest bike uh. Base of knowledge in the planning department, so she. She she basically like builds her own bikes, I think, uh, she probably won't say that. She has the capacity to if she wanted to.
Okay, I'll take recommendations. I got my kids riding though, I taught my kids to ride a bike, so I to ride bikes, so I have two new riders. So I'm doing my part.
Passing it along. To your point, actually, it brings us to to diagnosis and commentary number three. And just to make sure there's nothing else on number two, right, before I jump ahead?
Yeah, go, I think you can go ahead.
So, so yeah, your point, actually, uh, two of the things that you have cited, uh, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt are outside of our purview. And uh, planning and planning commission directly. Um, so so thinking about this comprehensively, so within the city of Ann Arbor, there's three different jurisdictions that are like. Departments and areas of the city that regulate and deal with bicycle infrastructure. So we are regulations and capacity essentially ends, you know, the property line. Uh, the DDA looks at park parking as a network downtown and they've been working on a study that, I mean, I think within the next few months. I haven't heard the exact date, but they've circulated internally the results of their study. They've done a really cool study like multiple time points and stuff. Uh, bicycle rack usage and designs and styles and stuff in the downtown area. It's really interesting and trying to uh and they're gonna be updating like the the downtown bicycle parking design guidelines. And as far as types of racks and those types of things and like, they've identified where there's more need and stuff and less need and based on your user data and stuff. So it's really exciting study that they've been doing um and should be out soon. Um, but the DDA also has an interesting role with private development, so they. Um, have a significant role in the types of racks that are installed within the private development process in downtown. So, you know, we say there's X class A and Y type class C. Those class C have to meet the DDA requirements and in most cases, DDA, the developer installs those within the DDA, takes over like. Maintenance ownership essentially because they are constructed in most cases in the public right away along a sidewalk. So they have like a role in that, like deciding where those fit because there's restricted sidewalk space and competing uses between benches and wayfinding. And bike racks and light posts and everything else that's on downtown streets. And then uh, the transportation division of engineering looks at the and they've been working with the DDA. Providing support to the DDA for their study and stuff, but then they manage all the bicycle routes and stuff throughout the city. Identify the infrastructure needed to for the different types of routes, where routes are needed. There's a bicycle loop around the the downtown area. Um, that's all, you know, the highest class, you know, great or separated with with barrier separation and stuff versus like other areas. So starting to think about things of like, what if we thought about bicycles now as we've like? Automobile transport or automobile planning was thought of for seventy five years. So thinking about it as a network, so like just as roads connect the two point eight, you know, origin, destination. And the parking requirements for cars, trying to think about it comprehensively and working with those not. And one, working with those other departments and two, thinking about how how all the pieces fit together. Um, and thinking about how the different types of parking could fit into that network. Um, so they've been like had a number of meetings internally already with these other departments and just kinda thinking about it, it's like an opportune time. So the DTA is updating uh their standards and um. Not to overstep transportation, but like there's a lot of base infrastructure in for bicycle routes. So a lot of the transportation and bicycle infrastructure, I think that we'll see moving forward and, you know, not to misquote transportation. Is filling in those gaps, I think the downtown area is like pretty well built out and there's other gaps. And stuff and building like this citywide and and into the neighborhoods and filling in those gaps in the bicycle network. So using this opportunity to think about bicycles as a network, as a form of transportation, rather than just inside private development. In downtown and great paths in certain areas and as much as we can. And we have a limited role, our role is only within private development, but thinking about it in that regard. Um. And. And then like along with this, thinking about the type of, we had some conversation back in October, thinking about the type of deliverable. Not deliverable, type of outcome we want. In other words, we were talking about like, does this look similar to the current format where it's spelled out in text? Is it a pullout guide um that has pros and cons that I think we've only had one recent? Section that was kinda treated that way and it ended up not being updated with any more frequency than any other section of the UDC. Does it make sense to include it in in the traditional format within the UDC? Does it, should we strive for having a call out that, you know, bicycle regulations are or bicycle parking regulations are? Uh, mandated through document XYZ, which is, you know, living, breathing part of this code, integral part of this code. So thinking about those directions as well. And I'll leave it at that now for us to to discuss if you all have any perspectives or anything.
Thoughts, questions? I mean, I I think it, I like how that sounds, it sounds hard though, like I don't. It would be awesome to think of this comprehensive, to be able to get everybody on board to think like bicycle networks should be just as important as vehicular networks. Um, I don't know how you do that in practice, but I love the idea in theory. Cuz maybe then I would bike cuz I would feel safer and especially as like e-bikes are a little more vehicular like than than me bikes. You know, like they sort of do deserve. TM, um, you know, they deserve to have safer infrastructure.
So thinking about, yeah, how those connections fit in and then like, which would be out of planning's direct like role. But like what type of parking, okay, like the origin for you is probably okay to purchase an e-bike, like you have a. A spot where you feel comfortable having it at home, assuming uh, you know, space and charging requirements and all those types of things, um.
These are all my problems, this is exactly right.
Then and then, you know, having connections and stuff, but and then thinking about specifically for us, like what type of parking would make you? At your destination, what types of destinations you have, what type of parking at those destinations like would make you more likely to to ride a bike?
Commissioner Abrams?
Thank you, um. I would say on the question of like a standalone document versus something which is integrated in the UDC. For me, depends on where we end up in terms of, you know, the level of. Design direction and detail, the kind of how heavy the hand is in the regulation. Um. So I I could see an argument for either, maybe it just depends on how hefty that part of the of the code is. Um, I agree, obviously, like integration with transportation in the DDA would be great to the extent that we can do that. Um, and this is not maybe all that relevant, but I I hope that the DDA's assessment leads to the. Uh, installation of way more bike parking because. I mean, I would say fifty percent of the time I'm locking my bike to a sign. Um, there's like nowhere, there's nowhere to park bikes on so many streets downtown, it's kind of unbelievable, so. Um, but the other thing I think is that, and I don't know that this affects private development really, but um. It's very seasonal here, right? I mean, if you go outside right now, the bike racks are empty. So and I know that DDA has a way of like providing the corral parking. Uh, at the curb in the summer and or in the spring, summer and fall that goes away in the winter. But I don't know if there's any thing like that that cities do for private development to provide more visitor. To provide more short term parking in the summer months. I mean, Boston, if anyone does it, it's probably them or some cold weather town, so just a thought.
Okay, can I jump in and riff riff on that?
Yeah, and then Commissioner Mills.
Commissioner Mills, before I jump in, I I want a second. For the like the commercial stuff downtown, I don't think each commercial building needs to have its own parking space. I think if the DDA put out more of those corrals they put, take up a few parking spots. Um, I guess they're called corrals, I don't know what they are, they're they're like the. Parking grates that they take up a parking spot or two, if they put a lot of more of those downtown, I think that would provide a lot of temporary parking. I often have to park my park my bike to against light or street signs. Cuz I can't find a spot anywhere closer there if if there's one that's taken, so that kind of. Short stone, short term stuff would make a huge difference. For that kind of thing and then we more bike lanes, but I know that's kind of out of your purview, but. Absolutely connecting what you're trying to do with the rest of the systems that are to make it all cohesive makes a whole lot of sense. Thank you for letting me interrupt you, Commissioner Mills.
No, because now what I have something else to riff off of, so I think that this suggests even more so. That we, it complicates things a little bit. But I think that our multipliers in the DDA, what we expect in the DDA should be different than outside the DDA. Just in terms of like how like street like sidewalk management um and that kind of thing. And to Dick's point, like, I mean, what he said was, I don't think every commercial establishment should have to provide bicycle parking in the DDA. But our UDC does say that, like are we like we when we have a multiplier that says, hey, for commercial. We would want you to have bike parking, like we would be asking for that. And so I think that that's where I think where, especially if the DDA's put a lot more brain power. Into thinking about usage and what are the right multipliers and like how much it's being utilized. I do think that there's some benefit in thinking potentially about downtown differently. And as you're thinking of talking to those other places, again, I in terms of the comps, like, I don't know Davis. So I don't know if that's a like, I don't know if that how great of a comp that is. Um, but like certainly Boston, right, has like their downtown is bigger, but they have areas that have. You know, like that that. Approximate like they they've got the the kind of dense core and then things that are less dense as they go out. And like how they come um accommodate that. I think, um. The other, the one of the things that Commissioner Abrams. Comment about the seasonality brought up for me is that those bicycles live somewhere in the winter. Right? And so they like, we they're not out, but like the storage is something that is like important, I think. And so this is where it's like the. It's hard because like during the season when people are out and about, like they don't wanna put it down in the basement. But they're willing to put it down in the basement if it's like all winter long. Um, and so uh, how how we should think about that? And like, I don't know that the DDA is thinking about like, who are the bicyclists that come downtown? Like that are taking up all the bike spaces and parking their bikes to the trees. At least I think that there's three of us and we do not live in downtown high rises. Like, I don't know if we're the normal people who cycle downtown or not. Um, so that kinda matters because that's gonna inform again, what numbers you would plug into that table, the more simplified table. Um, uh, but that again might have a it might have a locational overlay, like. So. Thoughts there?
Yeah, I think there's definitely like, that definitely makes sense to because you used the. The traditional example, I mean, one of the big goals originally when the DDA was founded was to like. Why do we have parking structures and only have parking structures downtown? Because like the downtown area and the city and the DDA when it was formed, like, you know, res decided that, you know. It was one of the first areas that didn't have parking requirements and having parking concentrated in the city would administer that, you know, because it's a higher than more. Highly dense area like has shared vehicular parking demand and needs and stuff, so that's why the parking structure is tougher downtown. So I'm thinking about bike parking and I think that's why because of also limited space and stuff that. DDA looks at bicycle parking and like the racks like in the public right away and stuff, but like. Digging into that a little bit more with them, I think is definitely worth like our next conversations with them.
Any other thoughts? Um, I have been to Davis a bunch randomly and Sacramento and that was just making me think like Davis, I don't, Davis is not a perfect. I mean, I don't, it doesn't have like the denser downtown that we have. And then Sacramento is almost like a little too big, but it would be because it's like right there, so maybe just like looking at both. Um, I know the weather is like completely different than here, but Sacramento has some really, really good bike infrastructure too. Maybe because of the weather.
This, my hunch is that Davis student bicycle use for a while, I think it was the highest.
It has a bicycle. It just was Googling it.
That it had like the highest percentage of bicycle users among students or something, I mean, this is like dating myself a little bit, like. Back when I was like an undergrad in the mid two thousands, early to mid two thousands, when bikes were still kind of new. Not new in and of themselves, but as like a popularizing mode of transportation. So thinking about like, I don't think the University of Michigan, like student levels are are as high as Davis or a place like that, but. Uh, Commissioner Norton, Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Abrams, if you know any data sources about actual bicycle usage among students.
I had a bike in college. That was the last time.
I had a bike, I a bunch of people in my undergrad would ride bikes and I had like three bikes stolen and.
Yeah.
Los Angeles.
Have you reached out to the university to find out, do they have it?
I've looked, I've like looked up and down on the website, I haven't reached out to anyone yet. Like the bicycle information on the university as far as bicycle infrastructure is on like the central services website that manages the parking structures and stuff like that. And all the phone numbers are more directed, so I wasn't sure which phone number to, you know, blindly call. Because they all deal with like traditional, you know, fleet services and parking management and. Uh, you know, lost vehicles, like all the numbers are very like automobile centric.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who to point you to, but when you're asking them, ask about the dedicated bike storage rooms. I think there's one in the Fletcher Garage um next to the that new dorm. They they're, I'm curious if they're kind of keeping track of how much those spaces are actually used. I know they always have to clear out bikes that students abandon. I figure, um, so I know that's a big issue or it seems to me that every year they're having to tag bikes and then get rid of them. So somebody on the campus deals with bikes, I'm sure.
I can try to put you in touch, I'm I can send an email to my colleague that is like works with Planet Blue. And is like our link to student life, because I think a big question too is like, what do they do in dorms? Right? So like, I know that the high rises are not. Dorms, that's where the upper class folks live and they're locationally very similar. And so if they don't think that there's enough demand to have bike storage in dorms, like, again. Now, sometimes the university doesn't, you know.
I don't, yeah, there may be. But there may be a disconnect there that, yeah, maybe the university's not planning for that or like. They may have similar problems with the the bike storage rooms, like that it's a design and demand issue. Or on the other hand, there may be something else interesting to tease out, we might not be able to tease it out, but. Okay, like decision tree, I'm an undergrad, I stayed in student housing, you know, for two years. I decided to move off campus, I've definitely, I figured out using the big blue bus and walking to class and stuff for two years. Am I gonna buy a bike in my third year? Or am I just gonna like, okay, I made it to like, what types of decisions? I mean, we're not gonna be able to tease that out, but like part of that. Potential demand versus design equation in the student high rises may be based on. Rebuilt patterns based on where students live for their first two years. And yeah, I'll definitely appreciate like that connection, sir, uh, Commissioner Mills.
My dorm had sad bike racks and I just Google Earth or whatever, did Google Street View and they still have sad bike racks. Outside, just the hoops and that's it. outside, just the hoops, and that's what we used. And things would get stolen. And it looks like they haven't upgraded. It was in college a million years ago. Anything else you guys had on your memo that you wanted to discuss?
Briefly run through like our next steps, I think this parts a little bit more straightforward. Um, so like as we've discussed already, I think most of this has been revealed anyway through our conversations, taking a look at a, a bunch of different sites, not a bunch, I think ten or eleven that we've identified and tried to identify, like some developments closer to, to central campus downtown area, further away and a little bit diversity of uses to kinda look at like the, what has actually been constructed, because they all met our code. What type of variation in the design as implemented has happened and like use levels and try to have a little bit diversity also of uh, older and newer buildings, but all within the last like ten-ish years, you know, since the code has been, you know, basically the same. I don't know if anybody has any other suggestions, so you have a few just purely residential, a little bit away from downtown, a couple of commercial, because we haven't had many commercial buildings built recently, a couple of more recent commercial buildings. Um, and yeah, like ver- variety of student and not necessarily purely student housing, uh, as well.
You, you might reach out to the bike vendors as well and see, um, they might have they might be keeping lists of their customers that they could send a short survey to and find out if they're I'm thinking again, I see in my neighborhood quite a few people riding cargo bikes, pushing kids around. I have no idea where they store those things, or if they're finding that the services so, to the people who are selling bikes might have a good bead on what they're hearing from their customers.
The human electric vehicle, I don't know what, if that's what they still call themselves, but the people that are, that used to be in the Carytown shops, and now I think that they're closer to my house. Anyway, I'm sure that they would love to ask their customers, like, how can we make it easier for you to have an e-bike and a cargo bike? Like they're very involved in like, you, s- citywide sustainability stuff.
I have a direct connection to them, their owner's son works with me. So if you wanna reach out to them, I can make that happen. They, I think that's a really good idea, cause they sell a lot of those cargo bikes and people are putting them somewhere.
Yeah, they seem to have a good handle on things. Like, I remember when I bought my bike and was applying for the subsidy and stuff, they said, well, I think you probably still have a good chance, even though like, part of the subsidy was like already used up. So they have a pretty good handle on, on those things. Other groups have been identified, I forgot that I wasn't sharing screen earlier, walk bike, Washington, PAC, which if you're not familiar with, like, deals more with like accessibility issues, uh, as well, not just bike, but also like uh, accessibility for, uh, persons of various ability levels, which is a great suggestion that we appreciate, uh, our meetings with transportation, uh, with. Uh, Common Cycle and Bicycle Alliance, but yeah, connecting with human electric hybrids also is a good idea. We discussed a little bit, like the comparison cities already, um, up on the screen. And some of our, like, other, like, documents, reference documents that we, like, have already, already identified, already worked through and things that we're considering. But just wanted to share those, uh, we'll add human electric hybrids to the list if there were any other suggestions that the the members had of other guides or other cities to take a look at as well.
This feels like a good start to me. I can't think of other cities off the top of my head. I take silence as agreeance.
I mean, things are pretty good in DC.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Structures is pretty good and, um, you know, there's a variety, it, it's true throughout the city. I mean, clearly in the, in the downtown area better than kind of farther out and the higher numbers or letters. Um, but I think that they've got a decent mix of kind of densities too.
Yeah, I mean, even in Arlington, they have pretty good bike infrastructure.
When I lived in Arlington, a long time ago, like, the best bike room ever. I, like, it was full all the time. It was, it was super convenient. It is my, like, standard, what a bike room can be.
When I lived in DC, I was a member of whatever Capital Bike Share, I rode a bike then. Cause it was easy. There were stations everywhere and I didn't have to store it. Bring me Bike Share, guys.
Sarah Mills, email in the building that you have your bike standard. Um, that your, your favorite one, email us the name or the address of the building.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's a, a very old building, but it had like automatic doors that you could push so that you could actually get the doors to open. They were wide enough to go into.
Aaron Arlington.
I lived in Roslyn, like this, it was River Place, that's the easy thing, like, anyway.
I'm sure it's still there.
Oh, it's totally still there. Yeah. But it's like, probably like nineteen sixties, fifties, I don't know.
Wow, they're so progressive in terms of bikes. All right. Anything else, staff on bikes, or should we move to our last opportunity for public comment?
That's all for bikes for now. Uh, thank you all so much for your input and, uh, suggestions and um, ideas and other things to consider. And, uh, we've got our next steps clearly defined. Thank you all so much.
What's your timeline for trying to get through all this, just out of curiosity?
I think we'll know a little bit more, like, with, once we finish up like the data collection, um, and we've still been debating like internally, like the best way to go about that, um, and stuff, but I think we'll know a little bit more after um, data collection and have like a little bit more information, but we'll, we'll provide periodic updates. Um, I mean, especially since our meetings are only like every other month. Um, definitely keep you all updated. Um, we wanna do it completely and comprehensively, but not take forever, so find that sweet spot of not just like rushing. And I think we talked a little about this back in October, we could just do like a quick fix and like a Band-Aid fix. Uh, you know, in a few months, um, but I think staff's intent is to do if we're doing it, let's do it right, especially like with these synergies with other departments across the city and like good opportunity to work with other departments and areas across the city too, so.
Awesome. Good luck.
Thank you all for your input.
Okay, um, so we'll move on to public comment, our second opportunity for individuals to speak for up to three minutes. Um, I know we have, still have our one participant, so feel free to raise your hand if you have a second comment. No pressure. All right. Not seen it. So we can be done, we will adjourn. Have a good night, everyone.